Oh, thank you very much.
It's car terms?
What is it?
Hotels.
Okay.
Woo.
Guys, it is 7:01 on Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. This is a fully posted and called meeting of the Goals and Priorities Committee of the Board of Trustees of the Alamo High School Independent School District.
Good morning, good morning. A lot to go over today, so I thought I'd take a break, rested, sun was turned on, day is amazing.
Is somebody calling it cruel? I think that's a little overstating.
I'm not.
Morning.
Okay, lots of great recognitions. This one, we are going to recognize as spotlight on excellence, Gina, who's the attending for the start at Cambridge, very deserving of this spotlight. We're going to recognize our own Jimmy, Jimmy Walker, or I was gonna call her Jimmy Walker. Dr. Walker for her award at the T C B C State Conference. The International Thesbian Festival Theses Competition. Learning Disability Association of Texas nomination, sort of commission for Erica and Brian Stanton. Young Educator of the Year for the Texas Fine Arts, Eric Kabasas, who's our strength director. International Band Masters fraternity, which is a really big deal, David Stevenson was awarded with that as a customer. State Southern Vibe, National Chair, that's a big celebration.
This could be a million people.
We have a million people.
Yeah.
But what's nice is to start off with big celebrations like that, so.
Can I just say one thing about that, Gina, David, please, I think she's the one that does the registration. I just think that's such an important job that you don't think about. They're like the gateway to the district.
A lot of detail.
So I love that we're celebrating her.
She is the loved Eric Cambridge. She goes beyond. Anyway, you're right. Okay, and we are going to hear from our two O T C instructors about their plans for their trip to compete again nationally and again bring them on our national championship, right? I've always wanted them to get to present, get them to celebrate them too. So Jimmy will be presenting the grading procedures update and we're going to spend time talking about that in long range. And then she's, oh no, Heather McCormack will be with us today to present the consideration of the football field, the community room, and as of yesterday. I'm at last year's Alamo High School. So y'all, this is a really neat opportunity for us to celebrate the endowment efforts of the foundation in a big way that night. So I really, I told her I thought it was important that she come and be able to present to y'all, so you can all kind of talk through that with her. But you would have seen in your board book, the first two paintings.
Yeah.
And what is really amazing about the way that these three first donors have stepped up is that they're donating into every one of the endowment campaign buckets, which makes a big statement about the importance of each one of those. And so the way that this is structured is just going to have long term, that's obviously for our district. And so again, to me, this is another big celebration and so we'll spend time kind of really having Heather talk us through what that looks like.
Can we guess who the math professor is?
Right.
I bet you.
Yeah. Paul Forester. Next, Jimmy will come with her annual presentation, Pillar Vibe and Community Base to Camp Hurley, which will present kind of the overview about feedback February that too. We'll spend some time digging into and hearing from you all what you want her to highlight that night about that presentation, so. Moving into consent agenda. We have a policy committee this morning and depending on how quickly we get through this, I can come back to this item, but we are recommending the deletion of C D Local. The foundation has gone through a pretty extensive overhaul of their bylaws. And in doing that, it's caused us to kind of look at some of the policies that we have connected to that. And this is a policy that we've never followed and doesn't make sense for us to. So we can either delete it or we can reward it, but like I said, we'll get into it with the policy committee. We'll put it here in consent once we talk through it today. Annually, we come to you with a renewal of the S R O memorandum of understanding. And so you all know how vital Brian McFannas has been for us. I don't know what year we're in now. I think we're in year five.
Yeah, technically it's not annually, it's every, it's every three years. It's written for two years.
I felt like we've done this.
Yeah.
So how many years has he been with us?
Uh, three. It's just.
I was gonna say, I felt long.
I agree, yeah.
He's done a great job. Obviously, he's a resource at the high school, but when we've had some situations at junior school, even at Woodbridge this year, we've kind of deployed him out in the bow. And it's been, again, very beneficial for us to have someone that really interfaces with us to the police department. It makes a big difference.
He's a great communicator with the kids, too.
Yeah.
The kids actually really like him, like him being there, too.
He's got a real network of informants.
That's good. I don't know about him.
No, it's important. That's part of it.
He's there.
As a former A P, that's part of it.
I may be the only one who wants this, but I kind of would like to have him come speak to us. If we're going to renew the contract, I'd like the chance to kind of hear his experience. I don't know if that's something we can fit in or if it's.
Well, he is an hourly employee.
We can pay him.
We can pay him ten and a half.
And if people think it's not worth it.
You just got 13 grand.
Let's go let.
So let's see if he's available that night, if he doesn't have another commitment in town.
Yeah, maybe some brief.
And if not, I mean, I think I hear you saying you want this pulled by consent. You'd rather this be.
I don't know if he needs to be pulled. I would just like to, we're three years into this, we haven't heard anything other than, it was quite a conversation when we brought a police officer onto our campus. I think it'd be worthwhile hearing a little bit about what the experience he's had. But if I'm alone in that thing, I don't want to take everyone else's.
Well, if y'all decide you do want to, what we could do is piggyback it onto the end of a Wednesday meeting, because he does report, I think at eight thirty or eight forty-five.
Where are you guys?
Yeah. And we can approve.
Yeah, there you go.
Does he like it? Does he like you?
That's great, Steven says.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to answer for him? All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's very happy.
I'm thinking we can have a cool deal.
Okay. I have a long list of donations there. Kind of bills and then it's a budget, Mike, you were anticipating, and then it's okay. And then we'll move into the board members committee report. David, you have the foundation meeting today?
Yeah, I'm on the fence for that one.
For sure. District Safety Committee will meet on March 21st.
Oh, that's when you want it, Mike, that's okay.
And then, well, this is the month that we bring the employment contracts to your executive session. So we'll spend some time talking through all that with you as well.
What date is that?
Thursday night would be a long.
It'll be a longer.
This Thursday.
Yeah, just planned for it to be a long.
Next Thursday, their regular working day.
Okay, yeah, that's on it.
Next Thursday.
Okay.
Any questions about any of that? So because we're a little bit ahead of time.
I'm gonna ask.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask. I'm talking fast?
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask Frank to come up and talk us through the policy.
Yeah, so on the agenda, that consent item for C D C Local. I gotta hand out to give you. And it's two pages. The first page is the current policy as it is. And then I couldn't paste it, the recommendations made by the attorney for deletion or revision. So you can see that. And then the second page is, if you guys don't want to delete it, but you just want to revise it, is a version of the revisions that would satisfy the concern. And so I'll give you.
Pictures and stuff, did Jimmy make it?
It's just gonna be blocked.
You get, I'll let you, I'll let you guess who put it together.
No dollar signs on it.
I'm gonna give you a second just to read them.
Keep the three R.
So bottom line, there's a real need to distance ourselves from the financial piece of the foundation so that that money can't be tapped into down the road when there's conversations around unbalance and 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 and. So that's kind of the crux of this.
And I'll also say that loud for the public, so it's not a secret, I didn't not say anything about it. So what the board is reading is essentially, we had this policy on the books that said that the foundation's board would be approved by the trustees and that their budget would be approved by the trustees. And that goes back for a long time and.
We haven't done that for a long.
Yeah, it said, well, we have done them too. It's not good practice necessarily because we're not the same organization. And so deleting that would just clean it up, but if you feel like you still want to have some affirmative statement about the foundation and policy, you could do the revision.
I think the foundation is evolving so much. I think this is the right thing to do. So I'm recommending that we delete the policy unless, say, you have concerns with that.
Should we just take the whole thing out?
The only wondering I have, what thing was issued in 1997? Why was it put in there in the first place? Do we know?
No, and again, a return is like this, doesn't make sense, neither do you operate, so.
I am fine removing it, you know, given that we want to make sure it's a separate entity and all that sort of thing. Just the wondering that I have and I still want to know at some point, I don't even know who's on the board back then. It's like, why would we put that in?
He was reading us. Well, just the line from our attorney that says it really belongs to.
I guess.
I mean, that's the.
Yeah, this stuff wasn't major, so.
So keep reading, listen.
I read it out loud, no, I'm sorry. I didn't.
So David, I'll try to dig into it a little bit.
The only thought I have is, is there any, by deleting this, do we lose any leverage at all with the foundation? And is there anything we want leverage on? We give them our facilities to name. We give them our intellectual property to use, and we may not care.
I think there's separate agreements, right, for each of those.
For each of those.
So neither of those are affected by this local.
So we can oversight.
That would just maintain oversight through, yeah, because we control it still. There's still our facilities.
It's just like any other entity.
You actually approved the name of this.
Right, exactly. So we can use those policies.
I think you gotta ask the attorney that. I think you've got to make sure that you still have a policy that connects you to the foundation.
Well, but we can't, I think if I'm hearing correctly, what y'all are saying, we have to make sure that there aren't connections. Because like what, and is this what happened in the legislature last time where they started to look at other sources of revenue that districts had?
Yes.
And then we're going to reduce state funding accordingly? Like they were going into the funds, so having this foundation, especially as they start selling naming rights, suddenly it's like, oh, Alamo High is a wash in cash. We need even less from them. Okay. But I do think.
To protect the revenue, we might have to give up some oversight.
Yeah.
I will tell you that when they wanted to redo their bylaws and there was something that caught my eye, and I was able to express it in the meeting, I felt like I had a lot of authority because they knew we had to approve bylaws.
Yeah.
And if I, if we didn't have that authority, I think they might have been like, oh, Julie.
Well, so what's the revision on that debate? Did you read that? That's actually legal?
It doesn't reveal a lot. They just kind of recognize it.
They just recognize, yeah.
So I'll zoom to another step that I, that I know of in, when we did all the booster club stuff. And foundations technically, although it's a lot bigger, it's the same kind of beast. That is, our, the district's power essentially is to say, you are empowered to raise money on our behalf. But to do that, we have to approve, we have to have approval of the fundraisers. And we also, the second backstop is accepting the gift or not. And that's just kind of, so that's what the P T Os, with mule team, with mule pushers, with all the other ones. That's why, that's why we have these regulations now where they have to say, and so, and the other thing is, they have to say, we are, like, it's in our interest for them to have bylaws. You don't care what they are, but they have to have bylaws. They have to have a financial statement, capital five, one, two, three. They have to have, at the beginning of the year when all the presidents meet, they have to have a list of their major fundraisers. And those have to be approved by the supervising administrators like Ron or the.
So where is that later?
We have it in a regulation.
Is that written so broadly that it encompasses all the categories, specifically spelled out, mule team, mule pushers?
Well, yeah, so every, it's, what it's spelled out for booster clubs, so technical organization. And technically, the foundation is a fixed that bill.
So I'm just wondering though, if everything we talked about, we'd like to retain, has already captured there with regard to the foundation written in a broad sense? That really then again, this can go away, because they are a booster and we still have, like you said, oversight on their fundraising or their events. The fact that they have a bylaws and all that.
Yeah. I, so I want to speak off the top of my head, but I think it is, but I can pull it and maybe we can send it in a update or if you guys can give a sense.
I haven't read their bylaws, but all I care about is that they could never go rogue.
Right.
So I think what essentially has been communicated is if they go rogue, then we refuse their donations. I understand that, but the donators.
Yeah.
Won't be aware of that.
Yeah, it'd be a mess if anybody goes rogue. As, I mean, we, so we have a lot for some of that with COVID. I don't know if you guys recall, and so we had to say, so.
Yeah.
You know, so the district had an interest in what kinds of fundraisers happened during the pandemic. And so we had at least one incident where a booster club wanted to proceed with a particular fundraiser that we didn't feel was appropriate given the health situation. And so, and that was a very hard set of meetings, but ultimately, we agreed, like, nobody wants to get to the place where the trust, the district says, you could raise money for us, but we're not going to tell people you had permission to do that. We're not going, like, that's.
We don't recognize.
Yeah. And they, we ultimately understood that and solved it, but that is kind of the backstop.
But do we, under the existing other policies, we have the authority to approve or disapprove of a specific fundraising event?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not we, the district does, not you.
Yeah, it's a regulation.
Not. The trustees don't, yeah, yeah, that's the administrative thing, it's not.
But like mule, mule pushers has nothing to do with competition, does it?
Now, so if you make a list of all of the people that raised money, mule pushers is like the foundation, is like the P T O.
Yeah.
And so we all have the same kind of authority.
District does.
And in partnership. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the heavy hammer of it's not appropriate to accept this money is really the only thing we got if we want to protect the revenue sources. Because if the state starts to look at, you have oversight over that entity, therefore we can count that entity's balance sheet on your balance sheet.
Well, then, what you're saying, our ability or our approval or disapproval of specific fundraising events, wouldn't that be too much control? Like, wouldn't that link us? Because that's at the beginning of the process as opposed to, you raised this money, we're not going to accept it.
The district still has.
Well, that's what I have noticed.
You? Rogers.
Last year. I mean, they wanted to have a barbecue and it was.
Mule team.
Mule team.
I don't, I don't think that gives us some measure of control that the state's going to say it's a tool of our.
We're not formally upgrading our budget. We're not formally upgrading our leadership.
Which I, yeah.
And generally speaking, the purpose of those, like saying, you gotta, you gotta run it by us, how, what fundraiser you're gonna have, is because the big picture is the district has an interest in the use of their name, like, how are you going to raise money in your name?
And.
Or not.
Prior to this, an incredible amount of overlap of asks in the community, right?
Right.
But it leads to donor fatigue. And so, you know, we really wanted to map out a calendar of our big fundraisers.
Come on, wait, right, is all those groups kind of all together?
And they actually, they meet with me three times a year and everybody around the table, like, I'm sure, so.
So where are we living this?
Again, my recommendation is for us to delete it.
So anyone have an objection to deleting it?
Well, I think also the practice, we don't. But you know, we don't approve of the board. We don't approve of their signatures. We don't approve of the. So, and it's also for us to.
Start in the.
Yeah, either.
Does anyone have any objection to it being in consent?
No.
Okay, let's do it. All right, it is.
We're gonna still stay on the agenda here.
We're recording.
We're gonna pull Jimmy up and we're gonna start with grading. So that would be too good. Let's see that. Let's see Jimmy.
How are you?
Are those your strengths?
Bright?
Yeah.
I think it might sound the way.
Strategic learner, learner keeper.
Well, it says realtor.
Realtor. I am a realtor. My first time.
You're part-time.
My part-time. Anyone want to taco, pan, pull this up? I can't. Yeah.
Taco, taco.
I still.
Starting.
Okay, you know. Would you cover two sets of electric space?
Bobby plays out.
All right, we're getting her one taco bananas. So here's what I'll say about this. Lisa, this is to you. Frank and I worked on this together. So you will see, there is a little bit of just black and white on here. There is a little bit of color. There's a little bit of both, because we've been working on it together. This is, and I put part two. I don't know how many parts we will wind up having, but it will certainly be multiple parts. So this is picking up where we left off before. And so I'm going to show you just the small part that we'll be sharing on Thursday night. So we're all clear about what's ready to go forward on Thursday night public meeting.
I'm gonna push pause for just a minute.
Sure.
Was this in the word book?
Okay.
Stacy's on the call.
The.
Outside credit. The top part is.
I can read. Don't need to share.
Uh, share.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Okay.
The outside credit.
The outside credit wise. And then the second thing where I think we spend most of our time is just, Frank and I have a proposed sequence that we think will work as a process for this work. And so we'll share that and get your feedback. And then we are just chipping away at all the questions and so we'll see how far we can get in on what we have thus far. So for Thursday, this sits in E H D E. We've looked at this multiple times. You've looked at this multiple times. It's about outside credit and Blessed Hope. And I will just talk through this on Thursday night. You all have heard this. I've talked to high school site base. It's been in the high school newsletter. And we're having ongoing conversations with Blessed Hope, too, so.
What does E H D mean?
It's just the policy level and it's the one on credit by exam. So what you're asking about it.
I just want to know what the aggregates name stood for.
Oh, so.
Naming convention.
Yeah, so what they do is, the general category of E is about curriculum and instruction. And then they just start with E, E A, E A B, and so every kind of topic is just like has a letter.
Government naming conventions.
And so the E Hs are about.
When did Blessed Hope come, like, when did we start allowing them to count? I don't know. Here it is. Yeah. As long as. When did we put it, I know, but when did we put it in play that they're no longer, we're not, no longer accepting?
That's.
That's the new thing. That's.
I mean, I saw it in our money.
It's, that's this that we've been talking about. So I'll go through it, like, here at the top. So if was a private school offering nine classes in person, they are no longer doing that. Now it's a correspondence. I've heard about it. And because it's a correspondence, it's under this policy, we can only accept correspondence courses from U T, Texas Tech, and that's what's in that fantasy. But for kiddos that do want to have additional space in their schedules.
Yeah.
They can do credit by exam and there's not a limit. Like kids, students could take six credit by exams and if they pass them all, they earn credit for those courses.
They could do summer school with that.
Yeah, they can do summer school. So there's multiple ways. So we closed this avenue, but we haven't.
I'm interested.
Interesting question. Some other options.
It's expensive, too.
Are they a legitimate school?
It's legit, only terrible.
They are. They are technically accredited.
How much is that a legitimate school?
T T A has a list.
It's like backdoor garage type. I mean, doesn't seem legit, but okay.
Their website's pretty sketchy.
Yeah. I see, I just. Good morning, Stacy. So the next one. That's okay. I'm sure she's waiting. Class rank, so this is, you know, one of my strengths here, and I think somebody had it too, is just strategic. And so this work is big work. It's big work. It is multifaceted. And you all gave us, I know you can't read all this, you gave us a lot of questions to work through and they're really good questions. They're thoughtful questions. And as Frank and I started going through them, it will be helpful if we have a sequence of priorities in which to address these questions. Otherwise, it's kind of piecemeal of putting things together. So here's a suggestion of how we approach this work. So the first, and this is a sequence of discussion and decisions.
So like. I'll start from one side. So I sent the link to y'all with this spreadsheet that kind of provided and everybody's input on this. And I really think that as we walk through this process, it's just going to be a thorough process, that you guys do spend some time just kind of reading each other's comments because.
Yeah, I know, I was at that page. I was just trying to read the book.
Very apparent to us that. Every one of you sitting around the table has something that you feel the need priority. And so we took all that, you know, we spent time with the high school staff, kind of looking at that as well, because they too have things that they think, and they're the ones living it, right? Like they're the ones that have walked through this for years. They too have things that they want us to go with that. So Jimmy has come to a place, we spent some time really kind of picking out and thinking through what would be most strategic in walking through this. So what she's going to present to you today is kind of where we landed after some input, after review of your input. But again, I don't want you to walk past that document, that spreadsheet, and just spend some time kind of understanding what the team around the table is saying. Because you're all, you're saying really great things, but they're all very different, too.
And are you kind of rolling up the pass fail into the class rank as opposed to two separate things?
Yeah, let her get there, because we were gonna do it that way, right, we said, like, right now? And so in light of all this, the recommendations are a little different, so.
Okay.
But it's still in there. So this, the first, which is the longer arrow, is that the first discussion and decision sits on to rank or to not rank. That's how I think of it in my head. This is, are we ranking all students or only the top 10? The reason that it makes sense to do this, 10%, thank you, is that this gets to, Brian, some of your questions about the big why. It sits there. It also impacts all students and it includes notification, which was something that a lot of people, Clay, I'm looking at you, were really important to you about talking through that. So if we can work on that first, knowing, are we going to continue ranking all or just top 10%? That then takes us, influences the descent, the second discussion and decision, which is, once we know rank all or 10%, then we talk about how do we rank?
This is good. I get it.
Because if we're going to, and then it's the question of, are we going to rank all courses or just core courses? And this primarily impacts top 10% of students. So that would be the second discussion and set of decisions. Then we move into, once that's made about how we're going to rank, then it goes to exclusions, Lisa, because if we land on, we're only ranking on core courses, exclusions aren't as important as they were. So that's why that strategically comes next. And the exclusion discussion and decision, this is David, your comments about dropping grades would come in there. The pass fail option from Cy Fair, the exclusion contract from Highland Park, those models, we would work through those questions at the third point. And then once we've figured out what's excluded, what's included, then we take on the part of course weights. All of these are important. There is some overlap, but in terms of prioritizing and being strategic about which decisions do we work through, this seems to make sense.
So if it's in this for a minute, we can call into long range. Do you want to?
Oh, did I miss that?
No, no, you're. We were on the agenda. So we're, okay, we're now in our assessment and long range planning committee.
Can I just, can I, I don't, I just, this seems overwhelming to me a little bit. I want to, I want to really make sure that I understand it correctly. So hypothetically speaking, if we have a child who is a C student and, and we only are going to rank the core classes.
and, and we only are gonna rank the core classes, am I hearing you correctly? Like that's an option?
Well, I think, I think we're gonna collaborate on each arrow. Is that not true? So let, let her go through the arrows and then we'll, then we'll stick to the long arrow first and we can yak about that.
But we do wanna pause and get your feedback about the process and about the sequencing. Does that make sense?
There's a term that we use as our administrative team and we say, sequence, linkage, and leverage. Because you want to make, when you're going through a process like this, you want your decisions to be high leverage, right? But in order to do that, you have to sequence the way that you walk through them. And you have to link them so that they are high leverage. And so this is where we kind of need to sit with you today. Just to make sure that you understand the process that we're trying to, to roll out. You know, around the table with my staff, but it's also high school staff. It's also community input, right? So we have to come up with a process for getting some input.
Okay, I, I.
But I also think though, on the first arrow, I think that you, we should have a side by side of what the actual law requires us to do. Because in, in their sophomore year, the law requires us to notify the top 25%, okay? And provide counseling about their options. And so, you know, I, I just wanted to all know that it's not 10, it's 25.
So when we get to the questions, we took that question and we have some initial information. So let's finish this just as a sequence, but Clay, we absolutely already lined clear. And Frank's worked hard on that. We can show it.
Perfect. Anything else on this stuff from the rest of the boardroom?
So sit in for a minute and look at it because, you know.
So this is the process.
Exactly.
This is the outline of the process.
I think of it like when you think about, you're gonna clean your kitchen, you're gonna do the counters before you mop floors.
Yes.
And so this is just saying, what are we gonna do first? Cause it makes sense to talk about it first.
Okay.
Before you, we'll talk about all of them.
Okay.
And we'll go as slow and as fast as it makes sense for our community. But the first thing is the why. And do we believe once we have that why, that we should be ranking all students or just the top 10? That's where we start.
Okay.
All these other things will fall after we go through the first part.
Okay.
How long do you see the process take?
I don't have an idea, to be honest.
The image I used at high school site base was a snail on a rocket.
Yeah, which kind of, of course it'd be fast.
Right, right? So this would be arrow number one. Okay? The to rank or not to rank. So here it is the why. And then the decision points are status quo. Maintain numerical ranking for all students. Maintain notifications. That could be one pathway to take. Another pathway would be only change notifications. So we maintain numerical ranking of all students, but we change the how and the when students are notified, but within our legislative guidelines. Or we change, depending on where we land with the why, we rank only the top 10% of students as required. If we do that, automatically we have to change notifications. So when, so the way this process would work is we will go in kind of knowing, here's the three pathways we might take. And then I will go through all the questions that address the why, the notification, the top 10%. All of those questions, we'll go through all of those. And then little by little come back and say which pathway makes sense. But that's, that's why that, well.
Yeah, so while pause now, we frame it in a different way. That is, we've laid out a sequence of the things that need to be talked about and decided. As we're, and, but we also said, you guys gave us lots of questions and asked us to do research. So we have to give you the research we found so far. And so, so the whole discussion and the decisions are kind of put on pause while we give you the information that you asked for. And so I have a sense that just from other conversations we've had with other boards, uh, there's always a tendency to go from discussion to decision to information to question to decision. And, and that's fine. It's just not the most efficient way to have a conversation. And so we just clear like saying, now you asked some questions and we're gonna show you some of the information we had. That simply means that the discussion and the decisions are on pause for a second, right? Is that fair?
Okay, so does this sequence make sense? Um, so well, I'm gonna go on with, see how we do with the, we did our turn and talk. Um, so Frank and I have been working our way through the questions and please know what we're sharing is certainly not an exhaustive. Cause some of the questions are really meaty, but it's where we are right now, initial findings. So we have some information on six questions. And so we'll just see how far, because if some of them are large and need more discussion, we'll pause there and we can certainly pick up if we don't get to three, four, five, six, we can pick it up later.
Can I ask you a question? Going back to previous things, as hard as the process, I agree with it except for, I still feel, I, I don't understand how pass fail got dropped under exclusions. Because we already offered, we just talked about credit by exam. It's not a whole lot different than that. If we, if we set the pass uh, s- uh, floor basically at 80, which is what C, C D E is, right? I don't, I don't really see how that is, how that gets rolled up into the larger, um, class rank.
So I'd like to answer that actually and maybe ask the question a different way. Or I'll, I'll, I'll play it out. Let's say we don't go, let's say we do it right now with Blessed Hope. We announce a major change. Uh, we started doing all this, uh, it would be a major change to say, you can choose which classes you want to do pass fail, et cetera. The amount of work it would take to do that uh, is fine, but it would be a lot of work. If we're gonna do a big change like that being class rank, uh, whenever that comes out, that may come out sooner than later. And so it just feels like if we're gonna build a, a rocket ship, we wanna wait and make sure the dimensions of the rocket ship we, we start building one, and that's kind of our sense. So it's not necessarily like where it folds. We just feel like that's a big lift. And we can at least start doing it now, but if we're gonna be doing another bigger lift, it's gonna, it causes a pause on that lift. It's just gonna, the sequence is.
It's a great question. Lisa and I just get to ask it. You know, because it's been something that we've been talking about.
But, but Lisa, I think, I think it's, it's not even applicable if, if, if it, if, if we decide that it's just the core courses. You know, that make up the GPA, then the pass go option doesn't even matter. So maybe that's why it's down. That, maybe that's why it's down the lift.
I don't see how it doesn't matter.
And, and. Well, because if you're gonna take incubator or something like, you know, incubator, right? Some people don't take incubator because they don't want a hundred. You know, and, and.
Yeah, yeah, but I think you're simplifying it. I, yeah, that's one example. That's one time, that's one.
But, but it's not a core course. You see what I'm saying? It doesn't go to your GPA.
But, but I think Lisa's point, and forgive me if I'm presuming, may be different. That the pass fail can be addressed as a total standalone issue that doesn't matter with, with these other things which are deeper dives. That's one thing, but pass fail, I mean, we effectively already allow a version of pass fail by allowing people to take outside correspondence courses.
And credit by exam.
And credit by exam. We could just fairly easily enact a policy on pass fail that yeah, it, it'll affect some of these other things, but it isn't as big of an issue as these other issues of whether we're going to have class rank. And I, I think why necessarily roll this into a bigger process than it needs to be? And maybe that's.
I, I, I follow you, but that makes sense.
So some high schools, like following up on what Frank was saying, from the high school point of view, the idea that I'm gonna have a class and have some students in there that are fourth grade and some who are pass fail, that's, that's big. If you're a classroom teacher. So while from a student, and this is different from credit by exam because these are our Alamo Heights courses in the high school. So that is a, a bigger shift. Now it's a valid option. And please hear me say, it is absolutely there. I know from talking to Friendswood that they did have, theirs was more the exclusionary contract option. They have that in place. And then they went through the 10, then they separated GPA and they got rid of the contract. So their advice was, we did all this work on this contract, talked it through with our community. And then we did this and this and we got rid of it. And it was the community going.
We spent all this time making it.
And then possibly having to undo, right? Like live, live and then the tweak and the undo to me. And again, like when David asked the question, like how long do you anticipate this? This is not a practical process. This is not a three year process. Like this is, this is gonna happen within a year. Like we'll get through this. And it's not that we're cutting this off for five years. But really this is our recommendation is to wait. Um, so that we're not using staff efforts to lift a change right now. And then have to undo, you know, recommunicate right with everybody about it.
Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah.
It reminds, I, you guys, were you guys around when, uh, we first got E O Cs and they, this, the law required us to, to count to this 15% of the kids' grade?
That's even before maybe.
So we had, and so I was flashing back to that experience. The trustees at that time, remember, we spent in the state, we spent so much time and effort trying to figure out how to do that. And then the next slide's the session. I'm glad they did, but it was a lot of waste of time.
My only thing is I wanna make sure, and I know y'all are, I just wanna make sure that we're not just thinking about the top 10 kids all the time. Like I think it's important to consider the bottom 10, you know, like I just wanna make sure everybody's taken care of when we have these discussions.
And I do think that even having the listing of the top 10% in there as a topic kind of presumes that that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And I, I think that may signal some stuff that we're not intending to signal.
It's important to go back to the conversation we had last week about this to say, like, we've had our eyes open to some districts that have walked through this before we have, of what that does for all kids, right? And then how excessive provides for all kids. And so that would be the only. I think it's important to keep putting that on the table. We understand benefits for all kids.
Yes.
And just the research process. We might not change anything. And I think that's important to say too. And we might come through this and say, you know what?
So I think it might be helpful. We have six things. I'm just gonna preview quickly what those six are.
Why don't you talk?
And then we'll go back to the first, but at least that way you'll know, oh, they have this. We have a little bit, Carrie, that gets viewers. And so I'll show you what we have thus far. So the first was the question, the blue is your words. Like I lifted those from the questions. Um, so this is about the why. So we have some information where we ask students and then some other sort of information from some research that we did. We have information about, uh, the notification and does it sit with policy? We have some, and we'll talk through this in a sec. I'm showing you the six we have. Uh, we have what our other districts doing and what have been their results. So we have their acceptance rate from Friendswood, from A and M, University of Houston, UT. Um, more about if we take away class rank, what's the experience for students applying to college holistic? So we have some information there. Um, information about what are other options for notification? We have two that Friendswood had talked through. Uh, and we talked about, one of your questions is about the murmurs, how might this impact murmurs about academic rigor? We have an idea that Friendswood, uh, put on the table that they did. Um, and then this, I know you can't read that.
Yes.
But, um, Michelle Beard, do y'all know her?
Yeah.
She's our Red Sharp High School.
Yeah.
Wow, she's talented. She ran, Carrie, this is getting at yours, the entire, and I could call names off of course, but our entire, uh, graduating cohort from last year with GPA and rank. And then ran it again if it was just core classes. So that we can see what's the impact. And so we're beginning to mess around with this.
Well, that's understandable.
So that's, this, those are the big, and we'll get there. This is just the big picture of how far we've gotten and since we last talked two weeks ago. Um, it just, it takes time though. Um, because part of it, we reach out to Friendswood and we wait for them, you know, so it, it just.
And my Friendswood again, I mean.
Uh, Friendswood was one. They had a model, also reached out to Highland Park, also reached out to Cyfair.
Okay.
I have two. Northeast, um.
This is pretty recent too.
Theirs was before the pandemic. It took them a year.
Friendswood?
Uh, no, Northeast.
Oh, Northeast.
So now I'm gonna go back and we'll talk, you kind of had the preview.
Okay.
So this was the, for me, this is a question one of you asked. For me, the first question is why? Why do we feel a, a change in policy might be necessary? So I, I don't have an answer for you, but I have some information that we can take in as we craft our own. The first, we ask all secondary students, junior school and high school, how often do you consider your GPA and class rank when choosing classes for your schedule? And so the red is all the time. And that's 29%. Y'all have any of those?
Okay.
Okay. And most of the time is 27. Like that is a lot of.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of students that out of the wealth of opportunities at our school, they're looking at it through the lens of GPA. So that, that's a part. When we talk about the why, that is one part. The other is I did some just research on what is the benefit to class rank? Why was it even started? And the key reason it was started is the benefit of class rank is it allows college admission officers to evaluate how students perform in relation to their classmates. And the current use of student GPA that calculates class rank, it does have limited because it tells you how they ranked, but only in that school. And in 2018 state college admission report that, uh, while factors used have remained fairly constant, class rank has been declining in importance. In fact, only one of three admissions counselors identified class rank as moderately important. So when we talk, there are some changes in higher ed about how they are looking at students. That is one slice of the pie of the why. The experience and the influence of GPA on class choice is another piece of the pie. Um, so those are a few things to consider when we talk about the crafting of the why.
And I think the thing is about this is that you're never gonna completely get away from this. But instead of it being, how often do you consider your GPA and class rank? How, how often do you consider your future? Uh, what your future plans are. Because if you look at any common data set that's published by every single university out there. You're right. Class rank, when they list it by importance, class rank is slipping. But what's not slipping is always under the very important for every single school is rigor, a secondary experience. So they're looking for rigor. They're not necessarily looking at that class rank. And that's what I try to point out to kids is that they care that you're, if you're getting an 85 in this class, that, that shows great. You're, you're working, you've never gotten an 85 before. So it's about the rigor versus.
Pretty difficult, huge academic success.
But I also think, well, I know that the schools, the high schools that have got rid of the ranks, their admissions to A and M, Texas shot up. Okay? So I don't care what they're saying, you know, that's a fact. Period.
We're gonna show you some of that. Lisa, what is that one sheet you showed me the other day that lists, like when you apply to a college, it tells you, tells the school?
It's a common data set. Section C of the common data set that is published by the school.
By this, our schools. I thought that was very helpful to know that goes along. I mean, do all kids know that?
Oh, you're talking about the school profile?
Yeah, the school profile.
Oh, yeah.
It goes along with your application. It kind of lays out how rigorous we are, you know, all. I thought that was important to see.
Yeah.
I mean, I did not know we had that.
That needs to be something for.
And it, it was very impactful. I mean, I have thought about it numerous times since I left your house. Yeah. Have you got a brand new sharpened pencil to take this?
All the, the stuff you are bringing up on the next slide.
Are we all good though?
I'm not quite yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate this and understand that research isn't completely done. But for me, and this was my question, the why for me, we first talked about mental health of students and, and helping them. And I originally heard that concern about the top, or you would say the highest performing students. Then the concern kind of morphed into the mental health of the bottom 25% of students. And then it became of what you touched on a second ago, like Friendswood of, of their change in policy, helping more kids get into higher ranking. That's kind of what I'm looking for is, you know, a question of how the students feel as top performers, the bottom 25. How they feel about the current policy and how it impacts them, their mental health. Isn't a concern. I'd love to hear it from really all of them. And not just the anecdotal kind of ones and twos, and us doing our independent research, but really the kids. Maybe if we, if we're able to sit down with the graduating seniors again this year, talk to them about it. And they just lived the four years of it. How did it impact you? How did you feel when, when it came out and you understood it as a sophomore? How did it impact your, your? How did it impact your, your college admission process? But then also, like Clay was saying, the, the research about Friendswood, Northeast, did it improve their statistics? If it did, it's awesome, then that's great, but it's kind of like I'm hearing different reasons for why we're looking at a potential change, and I wanna just understand really why. And if it's all three, okay, but I've just heard different. And so that's what I'm, why I asked that question.
Yeah, I would, I would say that there's probably a lot of reasons. You know, there are one Z's and two Z's of every, because it affects every child different. But also, I think the important thing is the timing. We talk about when, you know, I, when, when we tell the first, in November, or is it October? October of the sophomore year, you know, that, that's another, you know, that's another thing that we need to talk about is, is the when. When do we tell them?
That's the overall why.
You gotta know that.
So Brian, one thing is we've been working on a post-graduation survey that we're doing this year. Councils are collecting emails from all our seniors who will graduate, so that we can follow up with them and get more information after they've graduated about, were you prepared? And so that would be a really nice place to put in some of the questions that you're thinking about.
I don't think we have that slated to bring to them in April.
I think we get one of them.
Can I summarize before David goes to, make sure I understand? Reframe and tell me if this is kind of accurate, when you say that, what I hear is a schema saying, we have our current practice, and if we ask the following, what are the benefits of the current practice? We could ask in terms of getting into college, student mental health. Like in other words, what are the categories of benefit we would measure for the status quo? And then it would be like, so if, if we want to improve any of those, then we would change. And it would, in terms of mental health, right, is that kind of, like sometimes people say, what's the benefit to the kid? What's the harms to the kid?
So it's looking at the current policy, but then also any potential new change or alternative. Look at it also, okay, this new change, how's that gonna impact your mental health? How's that gonna impact the, the performance of the kids in more schools? So not just a quick change, like, okay, current policy back, let's get something new. But also taking the time to look at that new and say, okay, does the research really support that change?
I think it's on the next slide.
All right, so I wrote, I like that idea a lot, unlike what Frank, but Frank is saying, looking at current policy, the benefit and the harm and the four things I'm kind of writing down from this, just current context about what are colleges looking at the most? College acceptance rate and mental health, and then how is it influencing benefiting or harm, opportunities in terms of pathways that you use in our schools? All right.
So, that's great. And Brian, for me, this was helpful, what Frank just said, because I've been struggling with this too. Is I've been trying to mull it over. Class break has evolved in importance over the years. If we're gonna continue.
No, 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 it's fine, no, I can see it, I want you to be able to hear David though.
It did not, it did not.
I think we can reach it.
I don't know, it's me, I apologize. She's not charged this. I am not.
It's the time change.
It's cruel.
So I, this, this was clarifying for me, because I, I got to rest in this place of benefit versus harm. Because maybe twenty years ago, the benefit was so enormous, because it was almost indicative of your future. And now it's incredibly less so, according to, possibly according to research, right? And so identifying the benefit versus the harm, I think that's, to me, that's the why. And it took me until right now to narrow that out.
And that's a lot easier said than done. So, like this is meant to be like, here's where we are right now on this. This isn't asking answer kind of thing, but it is where we are now. The next one, Frank, I'm gonna let you talk this through.
All right, so I'm gonna, well, I feel like this is, I'm gonna go into teacher mode for a second, so I hope you're not offended. I'm gonna call him Brian now. Brian, so I'm, so Brian, for, for number four, how do you interpret that? Like what are schools supposed to do?
You have to do what it, to me, I see it as a, as a minimum, as a, as a four. So you had to check in the box.
So all the kids in the top twenty-five percent in, at some point in tenth grade and eleventh grade?
With the beginning.
That's right, very good, nice, ten, so it's a trick question. Have to have notification of what automatic requirement is. Okay. Now, how about number five? I'll go to David for that.
What's the law?
You can always ask.
I'm not a lawyer, so these are the lawyer, you can ask.
Yeah, so fourteen days into the fall semester, the juniors, seniors gotta know if they're in the top ten percent. Correct.
So.
Which is different than number four. Paragraph four, because paragraph four is some of the.
That's, that's how I see it, and I also called ASB policy to make sure I was reading it correctly. So here's kind of, it does not require us to tell kids their class rank. That's very clear, everybody, right?
Right.
It doesn't tell us we have to. It also doesn't prohibit us from doing that, however, right? It is permissible for us to say, our method of complying with four and five is to just let you know what your rank is.
Right.
Right? We can do that, in fact, they're, the group.
It's an option.
It's an option, but it should also be a policy of ours, if we're gonna do that.
We can get there, we can get there, yeah. And so then our current practice is permissible, and it also complies, you know, with those two things. Now, there are certainly different ways to comply, right? We could just notify everybody that you're in the top twenty-five percent, that you're in the top ten, without plugging your rank and still comply with this part of the law. Now, so, so we're all clear that our practice complies with this part of the law, right? Now, I think, Clay, you can elaborate on it, but if I'm understanding you correctly, I think what you're saying is that you think that the way we comply needs to be written in a local board policy as opposed to just administrative practice, is that correct?
I, I think that if we are going to tell sophomores a numeric rank in October, okay, because that's what we do, I think it should be in our policy that that's what we're going to do, because it's not.
Okay, so I'll pause for a second, and let's just kind of dig on that for a second. So in terms of practice that I laid out the last time we talked about grades, you've got legal policy, which is state law, you've got local policy, which is board rules, and then you've got administrative practices, sometimes you write regulations, sometimes you use the memo, but we just like, it is how administrators would get a certain thing done. Historically, Clay, districts generally don't write stuff like that in local policy. They'll just, they put it in regs or have administrators do it, because it's, it's seen as an administrative thing in nature. Essentially, because if you ever wanna tweak it or change it based on facts on the ground, it's a lot easier just to kind of say administrators, change it. But if you wanna change it, you can't move as nimbly, because you have to go to the board every time you wanna make a minor change for something that's administrative in nature. Now, we can certainly talk about, the board can decide whether, well, we, we get that it's administrative in nature, but we still want it to be in legal, in local policy. You guys can make that decision. I'm just saying typically that's why things like that aren't in policy.
But you, I think y'all did, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all did give us what your administrative procedures are as far as rankings concerned. There was another document.
Yeah, so yeah, yeah.
And, and the ranking wasn't on that document either?
Correct, now. That reg only mentioned the way we did juniors. And what I said was that it is silent on how we do the twenty-five percent. Now, I'm gonna go back and reframe that and be just more honest with you. We never went back and updated the regulation when we found out we had to top twenty-five percent. But it was an oversight and it's not mentioned in the reg. But we still know we had to follow the law, so we still came up with a process, but we just never updated the reg. We can certainly update the reg if we need to, but the reg only mentioned the way we do juniors. It didn't have that added how we do sophomore.
But Clay, if I'm hearing you, your point is you would like to see us adopt a local policy that actually sets forth what we think we should do.
I, I, my whole thing is, is wherever we end up on this, okay? Obviously, if it's gonna take, you know, two weeks or two months to, to do research and, 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 and obviously it's a subject that affects all of our children, whether they're the last in the class or the first in the class, it affects them all. And at the end of the day, I think we should have something in writing that this is what we are going to do.
Yeah, I agree with what I'm saying, I really, and, but to me, it's, it's in that regulation. It's an updated reg, you know, as far as whatever decision we get to can be in writing in the regulation, but it's not necessarily to me appropriate to put it in.
I don't get the.
Well. I don't, I don't think you can do that now.
Yeah, quite often, like some, like, that's a great example, Clay, so when we write regs, and I say we write them mostly for ourselves, that's true, but we also do write them, like when, for, like, so like Spanish immersion, that's a very high-profile process. We have regs for us, but we also have regs to get somebody to come to the access. You can pull it out, you can show people, yeah, so that's, when it's really important, yeah, a reg is really appropriate.
I, I just think it's very important, because I think if you go through another few slides, you'll see, my hope is you'll see that the research will show, like, there's, there are high schools that got rid of the rank, and like I said, their admission to Texas or A&amp;M, their students went up probably double-digit percentages, okay? So this is not something that, this is a big deal, you know, because that affects people's rest of their lives. And so I don't want this to just be, you know, well, you know, we've got it back in a notebook somewhere that, you know, we, this is kind of what we do.
That's a great point.
That's all I'm saying.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Let's move to the, just so everyone knows, because of these other issues we've got, we're gonna have this conversation through eight fifteen and then move on to the next. That doesn't mean we're cutting off.
So that's moved seven minutes.
Yeah, so moved through.
All right, no, no, that's good, that's good.
Close, close.
So this is just, the first one is what we talked about, Lisa brought up about class rank just isn't as important, and there are fewer and fewer schools that are actually ranking. Two is just a list of some of the schools that have pulled back so that they are only ranking top ten percent. None of those schools have switched back to ranking.
Interesting.
And here's part of their rationale for why those other schools get into the why of why they said that they, in their community, went this direction. So that's what this summarizes. I do wanna get to.
I like that a lot.
This is very.
So again, we'll send you this, so you can tap into it after today.
I like that.
Yeah, so guys, I'm gonna pause here, because I think it's really important for you to know, like, we are so grateful for the districts that share this behind the curtains information.
Yeah.
Like, I just wanna point out that we are in Alma Heights, and we are looking at college acceptance rankings from another school district. And they share them with us, because we have a relationship, and we're all working on things together. But this is their local information that they were generous to share with us. So this.
And can I ask one quick question? Is Friendswood comparable to us academically, like Demberger's academics and all that? Okay.
Yeah, their demographics are a little different.
Y'all have a massive focus.
Yeah, they don't know that.
So this is, so now they removed class rank, so twenty nineteen is with class rank, twenty twenty is without. Now, this is number of applicants, so in twenty nineteen, out of a graduating class, they had eighty-nine students who applied, and in twenty twenty, they had ninety-one. So looking at this chart, any admission method would be like blend, blend team, any admission program into A&amp;M. Direct admission is full acceptance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So looking at first quartile but outside top ten percent who were automatically admitted. So by any admission method, ninety percent in twenty twenty was eighty-six. Direct admission went from fifty-three percent to seventy-five. Now going, Carrie, I know this is on your heart, second quartile, sixty percent to eighty, direct admission thirty to forty-four, and look at four, third and fourth.
Look, that, that's, that is.
Four percent to fifty-one percent direct admission to thirty-eight.
If I wanted to write the nineteen.
If I wanted to do the math myself, knowing that it's eighty-nine and ninety-one, could I? Because I'm curious, like how many, what is four percent, well, I guess I could, yeah, four percent of eighty-nine and nineteen ninety?
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a small data set.
But I mean, but it's, it's been a different picture of like, it went from three to, oh, excellent.
Yeah.
You know.
Number seven sentences.
Correct, that's all correct.
We all know what percentage of those eighty-nine.
Or the third and fourth.
Yeah, and the other thing I think is interesting going to what you're saying, Brian, is, but everyone is a student, right? Right? Who may not have been accepted the year before, who was accepted this year.
Who wanted to go to Texas A&amp;M.
So, so, so you, you, you almost have to ask yourself, okay, what's the real difference when they're applying, right? And, and so the, the guy or the girl that was in the third or fourth quartile, okay? If, if they have an application from Alma Heights that says, you know, they're, they're three thirty-four, right? That was their rank, and you're kind of like, oh, man, really? Now, if. The top ten. So they actually have to like look at their, at their application.
That's not, but so this, no, wait, so this does paint a little bit of a skewed picture. Because it is not the rank that is given by their high school. However, Texas A&amp;M requires every student to complete a self-reported academic record, where they go through and they enter every grade that they got, and whether it was in advanced, and then A&amp;M ranks them.
Yes.
And right on.
Right, they rank them on themselves.
Right, and right on their portal that says, did you turn in all your stuff? It says, we put you in this percentage of the class. So this is a little bit skewed, because those kids in the third and fourth quartile, even A&amp;M's ranking of them would not be in the top quarter. And that is something that they report on every single student on their own portal page. So it, it, you can't assume that this means that those third and fourth quartile kids' grades were also thrown out, that they got this holistic review, that they just looked at their essays and their, and, you know what I'm saying? They still look at those kids' grades.
Yeah.
So probably has more to do with the way that they do ranking at their school, their multipliers and all that kind of stuff.
Do they have a multiplier at Friendswood?
Yes.
So do you, are you saying that on, that kids in the third and fourth quartile from Friendswood might actually have, have better grades than other kids?
Well, well, A&amp;M's a little different than most universities, honestly, right?
You can end that statement right there.
However, I'm just saying that.
I totally, Clay, he was kind of worse.
In the sense of like data integrity, sort of like what Brian's saying, I'm wondering, you know, this sort of assumes all things are equal. So like, did average SAT scores change, did ACT scores change? You know, because if they spiked in for that twenty twenty group, well, maybe that's the explainer enough.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
In twenty twenty, it was test option.
Well, I was gonna say, okay, the COVID effect of twenty twenty, that was mine, like, was, does that, is that the tossing out of the ACT, SAT? Is that, that year, right?
So all, all of this is some information, this is not, right? True with capital T, right?
And one quick question, Lisa, can we get from A&amp;M, from their portal or whatever, their statistics to compare? Or no, we can't.
You can apply it, I can.
This is, again, Friendswood is near Houston, so this is University of Houston, it's one of their large destination universities. So here's number of applicants twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and then fall of twenty twenty-one. And again, you can see where, same thing, this is first quartile, second, third, and fourth, only direct admission. And it's a similar trend. And the fact that they do have some of their twenty, fall of twenty twenty-one data, which is still under the COVID umbrella, but not like it was in twenty twenty. So it's another piece of information. And then UT is a little more proprietary with their data, but this is where they are with college acceptance, and theirs is numbers, because they don't know how many people actually applied. Does that make sense? So it's not a percentile, this is, so I think it's good for us to know, they worked really hard to get some data, and this is, it, it's not gonna be neat, clean, and tidy, uh, when we, or if we go down this road of tracking this for ourselves, it's not gonna be...
What is pace?
That's there, blend team.
Like, Austin, well, then what's the difference then, because I thought ultimate admission?
That's capped, that's where you basically go to a different campus and get the good, 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 good.
Um, this is, am I, am I, am I done?
Yeah.
We look at number four.
Let's not get into a new question.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at number four, though, real cool.
But again, I would, I would ask, like, what is thirty-eight percent? Is that two kids?
Yeah, well, we'll dig down on the data.
I agree, I mean, the number looks strange and it's awesome.
But I would also ask then, what's the harm? What's the benefit?
That's what we're gonna go and talk about.
No, no, my whole question is, is what's the benefit of keeping it where it is now? When all the statistics show that it increases, I don't care if it's one kid.
Well, I think as we get into the data, we'll have all these, we'll dig in all this stuff, because we do have a, a COVID thing that happened, where schools, universities changed how they look at kids.
Right, so does that mean that because ranking changed, it was like, that's why those numbers changed?
Or because universities all changed, and that's why it was...
But I think they're going back to what they used to do, right?
So I need to find a high school that removed ranking more than that.
That's a good idea, that's a really good one.
Sweet.
Alright, thank y'all, I'd really, thank you for this.
This is helpful.
I know, this is a tough one.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if this is a topic, but I'd like to hear everybody's, where, where, where did everybody stay on that? Like, what, what, I'd love, uh, and I can copy you, but I'd love to know where you stand, knowing, you see this on a daily basis, and tell students how to get their kids.
Cool.
That's right, I think it would be helpful, Carrie.
Really, yes. Their recommendations are so much.
I know, I know.
And there's usually one that just...
Yeah.
And, and I think once we get through this initial, like, this given slide, I do think we need to set up just one of our meetings where it's nothing but discussion.
Well, I think that's, that is important to me.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Even if we have to do an extra Wednesday.
We're comparing, well, this, what if we, like, what about someone like the St. Mary's Hall? That, that hasn't had ever been class ranked, and compare their number.
They don't have class rank at all.
Private schools don't have class rank at all.
No, some do.
That's a very true point.
I get, okay, we're gonna do...
Because there's people who pay so much...
And so, bottom line, what we need from you, you had all of this data shared in the board book already. Uh, Jimmy's gonna do a formal presentation to the community, you know, on Thursday night, and so, um, we're celebrating a record number of participants, we got a lot, um, of feedback, a lot of great feedback. Y'all, this is just kind of the beginning of another process for us, that improvement plan, right? So, our campuses dive into this, um, Jimmy is not, she's got a team that qualitatively codes all the comments. They read everything that was submitted, and so, that's gonna be the next phase, but, but this just kicks off, like I said, um, and, you know, the needs assessment continuously, so campuses, and then our district improvement plan will be impacted by this as well. So, what would be helpful is after you have looked at the data, um, is there anything that you want Jimmy to highlight on Thursday? So why don't you kind of pull it up? Oh, yeah, happy to, okay. What we're doing is we're trying to end by eight-thirty. Okay, I thought I was...
Yeah, we're leaving you some time for this, too.
And can we see all of the data? I'd like to see all the data.
For what?
The responses.
That is all, we're giving you all the data.
Oh, you are? In that one report we just got?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, it just was like one, a few, like, it was like ten answers to one question. I don't know, I'd like to see all the answers. I don't know, I, I like that.
Let's make sure we, that, 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 uh... You gave them like three, sure. Correct.
Right, so we, we got this.
Yeah.
But that's not...
No, I, I like to see the bowl.
You'll get...
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, and it is...
Okay, good. That's good, I like it.
It's good.
So here's, um, in the report that's in the board book, there is more in that than what, just for time's sake. So, on, um, this is talking through, as Dana said, just the robust response rate. And then highlighting, uh, climate, both from student, teacher, and staff perspective. And then because we continuously talk about belonging and relationships, talking through those survey results, through student point of view. In your board book, you also have from teacher, but I think it's important in the meeting to talk about it from students. And then from the parents, the slide that is on, uh, here's relationships, belonging. This one that just talks about if, if you were going to recommend, if a friend or colleague was looking for a school, how likely are you, um, to recommend, I think it's important to talk through that. Because y'all, here's the thing, I think, I love Alma Heights to the poor my being, but I can tell you ten things right now, I think, I, I don't want to change. But keep in hold those two views of being like, I want to change this, I, I don't agree with this, and I love this district. And I see that so much, um, in the survey, where there is, what would you like to change, there's some really good ideas there.
That's why I'd love to read that.
And, there's this, heck yeah, everyone should be as lucky to come here. Uh, this is about staff just, and, again, that, that sense of, I love my job, there's things I would like us to talk through, but y'all, I, I don't know, my glasses on, you think it's ninety-two percent are satisfied with their job at Alma Heights? Like, that's amazing, after everything we've gone through. And then this is just some of the open-ended, what do I value the most? I have three from parents, two from students. And then this is just direct screenshots of some of the things that are emerging as ideas to improve Alma Heights. And then it ends with next steps, about when do we send staff their information, when do campuses get there? What's the timeline for reading all those, y'all, it is thousands of comments. Um, and then when will we share out additional, like, as you say, Carrie, like, the pool, not just the numbers, but the words as well? When that would come, and then that we use this for a same-day campus.
But I have...
Their site-based data.
And they, they, exactly. So, this, and Thursday night, I tried to sit at big picture, but, um, we do break it down, so every campus has their own. It helps us, um, think through ways that we can support the district staff and, you know, there's...
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not, and I'm sort of thinking with my mouth open on this, but, which is dangerous. But I, I kind of think the public might benefit, they may want to understand, I mean, these results could be skewed because they're, let's just say overwhelmingly positive, uh, responses at the elementary level. And that brings up everything, so, hey, a group of parents or a parent who is concerned about, let's just say, the high school were making this all up, um, they may feel, oh, well, I may be, you know, totally different from the rest of this. Whereas, it may be that there's a significant group that has concerns, and that may be helpful. Now, I, I also understand by breaking it down, you can create a feeding frenzy.
Well, the culture that we've tried to create at this is one that's, you know, very, you know, transparent to leadership and to, to staff members as far as improvement. I, I'm comfortable breaking this down, elementary and secondary, I think it gets a little, um, it's, it's not the tone that we want when we compare campus to campus publicly.
Well, that's why I wouldn't do the two elementaries against each other, but I do think there's a significant, and all of us who have had junior school students realize, they hate everything.
So, Brian, let me rephrase your question real quick, are you asking, because do you think that would be helpful for the board to know? And maybe I can pull that and Dana's included, or is that something you would want us to put up on a Thursday night?
I definitely would like to see it. I'm throwing it out as an idea.
We can break it up, like I said, elementary, secondary for you, um, but campus slides I can share with you all.
Yeah.
But just, Ryan, I just want to... You're, you're asking for the public to see all, all of it, right? Isn't that what we're going to do?
Everything that's on here, this is the...
I think if you break it down, the only reason I think that it's important to break it down by campus, maybe not the elementary schools, but junior and high school, is because there are parents that, you know, let's say a group of parents are really upset about something. They, they think that they're, they represent everyone sometimes, right? And when they look at that, when they look at it, you go, oh, wow, there's only three percent that didn't like this. You know, and then all of a sudden, this group of parents realize that they are really on the outside.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, right? Okay, so, I, I think that's why that's important.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
Got one question, are you seeing the same disconnect in the respectful relationships at the elementary level and the secondary level, because that's one of the district design team's goals this year.
Look at this, this is my shaver ball, and I'm just gonna pause, then just, uh, these two, when we look, and you're fielding this again on Thursday, relationships is something we've been working on. We went from sixty-one positive, uh, res- positive responses, meaning they chose one to talk to, to sixty-six. And it is, when we asked kids, because I went in and talked to high school kids, how do you define a positive relationship? They said it's someone I can talk to when I have a problem. That gap, Brian, that you're talking about between elementary and secondary, when we use their words to ask the questions, that gap went away.
So that was one of my big takeaways from this, was that question asked, that was worded by the students. I think that's important to go forward.
Absolutely.
I thought, I mean, I just thought that was a good lesson.
So, the questions above, we've asked for the last prior years.
Yeah, but letting it put it in their words.
This one, in their words, and so, this is belonging. So here's, do you remember when we asked kids, we did a survey in the fall, fall feedback about belonging? And we saw it plummet? And it was a forty-nine percent positive response, when we asked in February, now it's at sixty-five.
Was that reworded by the students too?
No, this is the same questions, and in twenty nineteen, going back historically, it was at sixty-five. So we went from six, I mean, sixty-one, to the fall, we dropped, and now, here we are in February, same questions, and now we're at sixty-five.
Is that ni- is that twenty nineteen number, the survey, correct, so it's the same?
Yeah, so I think that that's a, are we where we want to be yet? No, sixty-five means the other side is, you know, we're, we're not where we want to be, but...
But also, we, I mean, come on, the twenty twenty-one, we have to fly off COVID.
There, there were some macro things going on in the world that everybody felt unease, right? And so then they projected it on the nearest thing to them, and so that might have been a...
I think that had to happen.
So, one of my favorite things I am seeing, and this is just my anecdote comment, is there is such a strong theme of appreciation here. Like, I don't, I'm getting emotional, like, it just be, thank you all for everything, like, thank you for trying, thank you. It is strong, and it is apparent, and it is affirming. I'm gonna also have you go back to slide number nine, because, um, y'all know that, uh, one more, yeah, teaching right now is harder than it's ever been. What our teachers have walked through for the past three years is more difficult than it's ever been. And when you look at this affirmation about how they feel about serving this district, um, is incredibly affirming. And it is not the conversation, and it's, it's not the tone that you're hearing other places, and so, there's a lot...
I wanted to make a comment on this too, since you brought it up, because I do attribute that to the culture that we have maintained in this district for generations of school boards, of students, of parents. Because when we opened schools in twenty twenty, and every single staff member showed up, that to me, when we were looking at all the other districts and all the shortages they were having, and we counted on every person to show up, and it did, like, that just spoke volumes to me about the culture here.
And this, David, when you say the culture, is this teachers? This is going from the most positive response, what's right there, number one? Teachers are trusted. And when you think of the year we've had, and the questions that have been asked, and the conversations we've had, that our teachers still feel trusted, like, you're not happy, you're not satisfied in the workplace if you don't feel trusted.
And the next one down, respect this, I think that's huge, too.
So, alright.
Thanks.
I'll put it out, good. Do you want to take a five-minute stretch?
You guys, right, right before we go into executive?
Great.